Members, let's resume. For this session, we're going to discuss labor-related issues. Let's invite the Secretary for Labor and Welfare, Dr. Lo Che Kung, to give a brief introduction before we start our Q and As. For members who intend to speak, press the Request to Speak button, please. Dr. Lo Che Kung, over to you.
Thank you, Chairman, and good afternoon, members. In the fiscal year 2021, recurring spending on labor and welfare will be about $2,140 million, up 15.1% over our previous revised estimate, accounting for 0.5% of the total recurring government expenditure. I will highlight the key areas of work in respect of labor and manpower development the coming year. Now, for supporting employees, we fulfill important initiatives, and they are the Employment Program for the Elder and Middle Age, the Youth Employment Training Program, as well as the Work Orientation and Placement Scheme to help people who are not so competitive in the labor market with our assistance. So we hope we'll be able to help them. And we should also encourage employers to employ these people. So we provide an on-the-job training allowance. And each job seeker can receive up to $60,000 in allowance. And the second half of this year will carry out a trial pilot scheme. As I mentioned in the previous session, we will provide retention allowance. Now, the first three months of retention allowance of $3,000 will be payable. And then each monthly will be eligible to receive $1,000. The purpose is to retain him in his job. Another important area of work is abolishing the offsetting arrangements and the relevant legislative work. Now, this will involve an EMPF platform, and we hope to submit the legislation to this council, hoping that before 2022, the empowering, enabling legislation can be approved. And then we can then implement the abolition of the offsetting arrangement. The labor sector may find this rather far away, but we have to be meticulous because this is a major policy change with profound implications, and legislation is required. And we have presented a bill to extend the statutory maternity leave. And we hope that the Manpower Panel can complete the discussion of the bill as soon as possible with a view to approving the bill in this legislative session so that come next year, we can then reimburse employers' expenses in giving four extra weeks of maternity leave. Another area of work for next year is to increase the number of statutory holidays. The Chief Executive announced in January this year that we're going to explore how we can progressively increase the number of statutory holidays to put them on a par with general holidays. The government will work it out with the Labor Advisory Board to consider the way forward. Another important aspect of work is, as we all know, we have close to 400,000 foreign domestic helpers in Hong Kong. We should give them sufficient support and protection so that they can work at ease and dedicated to support families in Hong Kong. So we will set up a dedicated foreign domestic helpers division in the Labor Department. And the Labor Department also attaches a great importance to enhancing occupational safety and health. We have given regular updates to the Manpower Panel on this. Now, in the construction sector, although we have seen increasing improvement in occupational safety, but from time to time, we have serious fatalities. So through our work, we hope to lower the chance of such accidents. So we are going to establish an additional office through new resources allocated this year to monitor the OSHC of Repair, Maintenance, Alteration, and Addition Works. We will also launch a Construction Safety Ambassador Pilot Scheme to report any unsafe working conditions to LD. And then the CEO also said that we are going to launch a pilot scheme rehabilitation program for employees injured at work. We're going to entrust this work to the Occupational Safety and Health Council, and we will legislate to enable the OSHC to take on this task. We are now discussing with stakeholders to discuss the mode of operation of the program. And our target is to present the bill to the council in the 2021 legislative session. And depending on the progress of the legislative amendment exercise, we will start the preparation work. We hope that we can launch the pilot scheme in 2022, the latest. And for a retraining of employees. Now, last October, we launched the Love Upgrading Special Scheme. And then in the fiscal year 2021, we propose to allocate $2.5 million for ERBs and enhancement and extension of the scheme. On the 27th of March, we accepted the decision to raise the monthly allowance per training from $4,000 to $5,800 with a target commencement date of 25th of May. Thank you.
Six members, Lu Chong Hoh, Kai Ming, Leng Yucheng, Shiu Ka Fai, Fanaro Zhang, Pun Shil Ping, and Shiu Ka Chuen. Five minutes each. Mr. Lu Chong Hoh.
Thank you. In Program One, they said that in 2021, there will be a 3.9% increase or 15% increase over the revised estimate last year. From, as a member from the labor sector, I should welcome this move. But looking at the details, I think I have to ask whether the money will be well spent. Among the additional 30-odd million dollars, about 16.8 or about $70 million will be for the creation of 70 new posts to deal with the abolition of the offsetting arrangement. As we all know, this is among the most important issues for this term. So my question relates to reply 36 and 36, 35 and 36. Now, you're going to spend so much money to employ new staff, and each has an annual pay of $1 million. So they are rather senior civil servants to work out the abolition of the offsetting arrangement. Unfortunately, that cannot be approved this year. And then the earliest will be in 2020, in the next legislative session before you can present the bill. So we hope that within Carrie Lam's administration, the bill can be passed, and we have to wait until 2024 before the initiatives can be implemented. So we're going to spend $70 million, and we have to wait for four years before we can abolish the offsetting arrangement. This is rather pathetic. So President, I mean, Secretary, we already approved the new manpower. We have to amend the legislation and deal with different scenarios. Indeed, the work is rather complicated. And many of our colleagues will have to consider it back and forth. And you should not underestimate the complexity of the work. I hope that by the end of this year, we can present the bill to this council, and I hope we'll be able to see legislature back to the council, and you'll be able to see the bill. We want to amend the bill to take care of the arrangement for employees and employers in different scenarios. I can say that by the time the bill is presented, you will need quite a lot of time to scrutinize it. The preparation work is quite complex. Of course, we want something cheap and good and quick. All right, let's say we want it to be quick and good. Another question relates to reply 027. Now, for employers that are injured at work and absent from duty for three days, it takes about one year for them to complete the claims. In Annex Two, I can see that in the past three years, every year, about 20% of the injured-at-work cases where they had to wait for more than a year before the claims could be dealt with. Why was it so slow except because of lack of manpower with the Labor Department? Were employers unscrupulous? Or was it because the Labor Department did not warn these employers sufficiently? Now, even one day delay is one day too long. So every year, there were more than 20% of these cases which had to wait for one year, and then they had to go to the Labor Department many, many times. So can you handle these complaints much faster? I'll briefly respond, and then let's see if the Commissioner has anything to add. Now, if you look at the annex, you'll see that for most of the cases, they were settled within a year. But for cases with disputes, of course, we have to go to the Labor Tribunal. Thank you, Commissioner. As the Secretary said, when there is a dispute between the employer and the employee, the Labor Department will intervene as early as possible to make suggestions to both parties. Of course, our proposal will be based on the medical report and evidence gathered after investigation. And if either party do not accept a suggestion from the Labor Department, the only way to resolve it is to submit the case to the Labor Tribunal. So for a case that has to be put to the court, of course, the processing time will be much longer. Mr. Hou Kai Ming.
Now, my question relates to reply number 26. It's about the overall unemployment situation in Hong Kong. Whether it be in the budget or in yesterday's AEF 2.0, the support for the unemployed is precious a little. You talked about relaxing the asset limit for giving unemployment, CSSA employment. But for a 3P family, the asset limit is raised from $66,000 to $1,032,000. And of course, there is no income for this household. The conditions are so harsh before one can be eligible for unemployment allowance. How are you going to help our employees? In other countries, they injected cash to help the unemployed one month after the outbreak of the epidemic. However, in Hong Kong, we are three months into the outbreak together with nine months of social riots in society before the asset limit is relaxed. Secretary, what measures do you have to help the unemployed? What you propose is not helpful. That $8 billion, $80 billion is not going to help because they do not have any employer, and there is nothing in the budget to help the unemployed as well. The unemployment rate will rise to 3.5%, and for some sectors, it's as much as 6%, and it's not yet the peak.
So you, it's that you will only roll out something that is watertight and perfect. Now, the unemployed, the unemployed are drowning, and what you give them is not going to help. So what do you have to help the unemployed?
Support for the unemployed, again, this issue. Well, in the last session, we talked about this at length already in how we would support enterprises and safeguard jobs. Since August 15th last year, there have been four rounds of relief measures. And of course, not all the objectives can be achieved, and the unemployment situation is getting worse, and the rate is going up as well. In the previous Manpower Panel meetings, we discussed all the time how we should help the unemployed. The assistance for employment or employment safeguards, the severance pay and long service payment are a major component of that. And CSSA is a safety net which helps those who have not given any severance payment, and they don't have any savings, and they are just using credit cards to tide over the difficulty. So I believe that CSSA can help those in economic needs. Now, one of the measures launched last year, especially the Love Upgrading Special Scheme, for those who have gone out of job, they can try to retrain themselves and upgrade their own skills so that they can receive training so that they can get a job better. Well, you know that no lesson can take place within the ERB. Now, after the Easter holidays, next Tuesdays, we hope that classes can resume. Well, they can't get the several thousand dollars. So how can we help the unemployed? And, well, we don't have any measure for them at all. You are now just trying to safeguard jobs for those who are employed. And for those who have gone out of job, they get no protection virtually. So it doesn't mean that they don't have an employer, they don't get any help? Well, next week, we are going to submit a paper on the antiepidemic fund. And one of the issues of your concern is about the wage subsidy. I'm talking about the unemployed. Do you know what I'm talking about? Yes, I know exactly what you are referring to. I'm answering your question. So the design of this scheme is that the employers should hopefully rehire those they have laid off, and they can also bring back the frozen jobs as well. So we want to create job opportunities. And if we can do that, then employers can help the unemployed as well. Next one, Mr. Leng Yucheng. Yesterday, the government talked about the antiepidemic fund. They are providing employers with wage subsidies with a cap of $9,000. And we know that this won't help in preventing the closures of businesses. The employers have been forcing the employers to take no-pay leave. Sometimes, no-pay leave can be over one month's time. So in other words, the employers can't even afford half the wages. And now you are subsidizing half the wages subject to a cap of $9,000. You won't be able to help many employers or preventing employers from laying off of their staff or closing down. I'm still worried that there will still be massive layoffs. I hope that you can increase the amount of, to beyond $9,000 so that the massive layoff expected can be mitigated. And I hope, also hope that you can also commit more resources to the ERB Employees Retraining Board. Next Tuesday, you said that some of the classes will resume. But I think it's difficult to do that because right now, we still have the public gathering prohibition. And the retraining centers will be breaking the law if they resume classes. And even if they do not break the law, the problem lies in whether they have sufficient protective equipment. That's another issue. Of course, you say that the employees, the retraining centers can use via online classes, and that entail extra resources. And will the ERB provide more resources to the retraining organizations? So this is not clear. So will you provide more resources to the retraining centers to resume classes so that they can really buy more protective equipment and do online teaching? Now, the 27th of March, you said that the subsidy will be increased from $4,000 to $5,800. But to some class participants, this won't suffice, can't help meet with their needs. So can you provide more so that they are willing to undergo retraining programs? In fact, a lot of sectors, a lot of businesses have closed down, and these people have to sort of upgrade themselves and maybe take on new skills so that they can really find a job in the future. Secretary, I've heard the members' view. Since the start of the epidemic, because of the suspension of the classes, the ERB has provided retraining centers, which are important partners, extra resources so that they can continue with their classes so that their basic operation can still be sustained, and they don't have to lay off staff. And the member asked whether we can do more on helping them to fight the virus. I think the ERB has been working very hard. And we've asked them to provide, help provide the basic protective equipment. So say, provide enough surgical masks to the class participants. I think the ERB is very intent on doing that. If they run into any difficulties, the ERB will help the retraining centers to resolve these problems. We understand, say, for protective equipment like the surgical masks, the supply has eased off a bit. But then it's not the case that you can instantly buy any amount you like. So we will be working together with ERB and see how we can help retraining bodies to resume the training in an orderly fashion. So can the secretary give us more details? You said the classes will resume next week. Can you give us more details? That's point number one. Number two, if you ask the retraining centers to provide protective equipment, would you be giving them more resources? Secretary, can I defer Mr. Fang, my colleague, to address that? Mr. Fang. PAS, Mr. Daniel Fang. The ERB on the 6th of April, so several days ago, started the initiative to allow the retraining bodies to resume classes online. Some 30 training programs are allowed to be brought online. And after that, the retraining organizations are discussing with their class participants to see when the online classes can start. For example, theory classes, language classes will resume gradually next week. And then in the antiepidemic fund earlier, we have given them, we are giving them a special subsidy of 30% of their operating expenses. So once the classes resume, the retraining subsidy will also be given to them again. And that is calculated based on the number of participants for each program. I believe that should suffice for them. And we will be keeping close tabs on their situation and see whether we need to do anything more. Mr. Shiu Ka Fai. Well, this is supposed to be a session on labor in the budget. So, but since members have discussed broad issues, and I will also do the same. Yesterday, the government launched the second round of antiepidemic fund, and one of it has to do with the wage subsidy of $9,000 lasting for six months, totaling $54,000. The sectors, the business sectors, thanks the government because it can help safeguard jobs and will also assist enterprises to tide over the difficulties in these few months. The government has proposed these measures. I know the details have yet to be mapped out, and the secretary will try to listen to more views. So I have a few questions here. So from last night up to now, I have received 100 or so WhatsApps asking such questions. If a company employs a person aged over 65, so MPF contribution is not made, so what about this type of person? Will they benefit? And then for the hairdressing and beauty sectors, they are, they work as self-employed persons. So they are in a way linked to the beauty parlor. They don't have an MPF account. They are self-employed. So they, are they covered? Are they, are they going to be assisted, given the very severe epidemic situation? I know that you have a Love Upgrading Special Scheme. I asked a question at the council meeting earlier. This scheme is supposed to help people who have gone out of job, and they can get retrained, and they will be given a subsidy. And maybe they are on no-pay leave, and they can study part-time, and they can get a subsidy. I think the idea is very good. But then you were just talking about $4,000. Even if you have, it goes up to $5,800 in July, then that means only $200 is surplus. So can you raise that further so that they can really have a meal and take care of their families with that amount? And for this Love Upgrading Special Scheme, I know that a number of schools have been suspended. So can classes be taught online so that they can upgrade their skills and also get an income? Three questions. Well, the third question, I think we've touched on that earlier. We have already started online teaching. If classes are not taught, are not on really technical subjects, and then the online classes have already started. And we will progressively do more teaching online. Now, as for the subsidy amount, well, it doesn't, it wasn't decided on casually. We have taken reference from the inflation rate. So this time, we are raising it from $4,000 to $5,800, which is a reflection of the inflation rate during this period. Now, next week, we are coming, we'll be coming to the FC to apply for the funding under the Anti-Epidemic Fund. So if we have a document in front of us, then that will facilitate discussion. I can only say something briefly here. And I know that you're particularly concerned about the wage subsidy. In brief, our objective is to help employers to retain their employees. So the principle is that all the subsidy will be given to the employees, and then employers are not allowed to downsize or lay off a staff. And then for persons employed aged 65, like what the CEO said yesterday, we try to use the quickest approach to deal with things. Now, even if we do that, there can never be any watertight policy. So for those aged over 65, as I said in the beginning, there is an employment program for the elderly and middle-aged, which will be enhanced. Now, the amount of $4,000 will be increased to $5,000, and then that will cover 12 months, and a year total amount of $60,000 will result. And if we talk about $9,000 per month, times six months is $54,000, which is better than you can make up your own mind. Now, for those aged over 65, which will, who will suffer a pay reduction because of the epidemic, they can still apply for the Working Family Allowance or if they are eligible for the old-age living allowance, and they can also apply the same. So we just don't look at any single measure. We should look at all the measures together, and these measures may work together to help the most number of people. So, Secretary, what about the self-employed people? Later on, you will see that there are different categories of self-employed, and they will be covered under the Anti-Epidemic Fund. But not all of them will be covered because after all, many people are getting self-employed. Now, if they are willing to contribute to the MPF, in fact, the self-employed can also contribute to the MPF, then they will be covered. But then if they don't contribute to MPF, and they don't, can't produce any proof that they are self-employed, then we can do nothing about it. There are some 200,000 MPF accounts relating to the self-employed. And also in the education system, the social service system, and the sports sectors, there are measures to help these people.
Mr. Shiu, just a few words. Now, for those over 65 and without an MPF account, please understand that it's not that they don't want to make contributions, but it's not allowed under the system. So from what I heard yesterday, you were forcing people to sack all those over 65. On the other hand, you encourage the elderly to continue to work. I think for the self-employed, they are in hardship. And as for the love love upgrading scheme, and if you only work according to inflation, I don't think you'll get the support of the majority in Hong Kong. Dr. Fernando Zhang, we are so anxious because the anti-epidemic fund two point O was announced yesterday. And we see a lot of loopholes in it. So before you give us a paper, we want to give you input so that you still have a few days to amend your proposals. You should take into account the views given to you by members. After all, we want to be constructive. We welcome the second round of A E F to help the unemployed, I mean, the employees as well as the self-employed persons. Now, for those who are sixty-five and not making contributions to MPF, what should they do? And what about self-employed persons that do not have any MPF records? The design of your fund is to provide wage subsidies, whereas most countries in Europe now, there is this standard in EU. They do not really provide a subsidy to the wages, but rather to subsidize their leave. Now, in Hong Kong, many are asked to go on no pay leave. In the UK, I mean, in Europe, they are either asked to take sick leave or vacation leave. Now, in Hong Kong, many employees are asked to take no pay leave. When the employers do not have enough business to cover their operating costs, they will ask employees to go on no pay leave. You should focus your efforts on those affected by the epidemic. Now, take supermarkets as an example. They are those who stand to benefit from the epidemic. All of a sudden, the government is going to subsidize their payroll by nine thousand dollars per employee per month when they don't really need it. And for some of the sectors, the business may not be as good, but they do not need a wage subsidy of nine thousand dollars per employee for six months. So you give the wage subsidy to anyone, no matter whether they need it or not. So for those who employ employees over sixty-five, they may be sacked by employers because they are not eligible for the wage subsidy. And most of them are grassroots and they don't have any bargaining power in the labor market. So you, if I say, are asked there, they may already be asked to to work, to cut their hours and cut their wages. And by giving them a subsidy of nine thousand dollars, well, the employers may ask them to work full-time now and just give them a few thousand dollars. So you are not going to benefit employees. Now, if you subsidize no pay leave, now judging from the situation of unemployment and underemployment, it rose from two percent in February to June, six point one percent. All we need is sixteen billion dollars and not eighty billion dollars. And the balance can be spent on helping those who are unemployed. I think for those, they should receive a subsidy of up to eight percent of their no pay leave. So employees can benefit more and your resources can be more focused to help those in genuine need. You don't have to waste your money on sectors and enterprises that don't have the need. Why don't you help those who have lost their jobs? You've asked them to apply for C S S A, although you have relaxed the exit limit to hundred percent, but still the allowance they can receive is very low. I'd like to know whether you will include contractors employed by the government. Now, the rig got money, contract money from the government under the contract, and if they can claim nine thousand dollars per employee from you, then they they really can benefit a lot, Secretary. Now, the focus of the session is not on the A E F, but I don't think I can really avoid taking such questions. Now, the design of the employment support scheme is to help employers. And if they want to have a comeback after the epidemic is over, they can save some of the employees. They can keep some of the employees and they can allow employees to take no pay leave and they can even reemploy employees they have already sacked. They may not receive a high pay, but then at least with the government's assistance, they can earn something. Now, if we focus on individual employees, and it is very complicated to devise a system to suit all of them administrative-wise and and time-wise and resources-wise, it will be ten times of what is required for an employer-based system. Now, if you want a system that is perfectly fair, then we had that very painful experience of the four thousand dollar cash handout last year. It was very fair, but it took us a long time to implement it. We want something that is easy and quick to implement. As the secretary said, civil servants will not be covered. Employees of subvention organizations are also excluded. And of course, contract staff of the government will not be covered. Dr. Fernando Zhang, what about staff of contractors of government? Contractors of government contracts will not be covered. Mr. Pun Shiu Ping.
Thank you, Chairman. As said in the secretary's opening remarks, we started to see negative growth in our economy, starting from the middle of last year. And because of the epidemic, it is expected that the labor market will continue to worsen. Well, of course, otherwise you wouldn't have to launch the anti-epidemic fund two point zero yesterday. My question relates to reply number oh five five, the protection of wages against insolvency. Now, these are money to protect wages when a company becomes insolvent. Now, I've received complaints from workers of the catering sector. Well, a restaurant may go bankrupt after employees have served for a few months and then they served another restaurant and again it became insolvent. So how can you expedite the disbursement of funds from this? Now, the fund has a balance of five point five billion dollars. I'd like to know when you can extend the scope of coverage. Another question relates to reply oh nine six. Many, many members are concerned about this love upgrading scheme, but the workers are saying that this scheme cannot help. The intention is to give them allowance when receiving allowance or receiving training. All right, more than ten thousand trainees registered to join, but only ten, only one thousand or so graduated because of the riots and also the epidemic. Many of the courses cannot take place. Now, you're saying that you may provide online lessons and you hope that lessons can resume very soon. But I think you are really out of touch with the reality. Can you adjust the arrangement now? For instance, those who have applied to join the scheme and who meet certain criteria can be given the allowance first. Because they look to the retraining allowance to help them to tie over the difficulty. Now, on the fourteenth of January, ten measures were announced to help the grassroots. Now, reply number fifty-one on increasing the number of days of statutory holidays. According to your reply, you're going to discuss with employers, but there is no timetable and no manpower dedicated to carry out this measure. So I doubt whether you really have the commitment. And are you sincere? Reply number fifty-two on occupational diseases. Now, our reason concern is whether COVID nineteen can be regarded as an occupational disease. Four questions. I will invite the secretary, I mean, the commissioner, to help take the question on protection of wages on insolvency fund. Now, for the love upgrading scheme, I think they have to attain a seventy percent attendance rate for a course before they are eligible to get the allowance. I think it's all about whether for employees retraining, we can just hand out the allowance, no matter whether a trainee has attended a course or not. If we go by that, there may be some contradiction. Of course, I have yet to consider this very carefully, but this is my preliminary view. And as for the number of statutory holidays, now we have the discuss of the Labor Advisory Board. Although we have not earmarked resources in particular for this initiative, we would like to work out a timeframe and a map with the Labor Advisory Board. And as for introducing COVID nineteen as an occupation disease. Now, take SARS as an example. As we all know, it only became an occupational disease in twenty oh five. However, in twenty oh three, there were a few dozens of cases related to SARS. Ninety percent of the applications obtained the compensation they sought. So if an employee gets sick in the course of his employment, that is protected by the current legislation. Whether COVID nineteen should be an occupational disease, we will consider this very carefully. Even though it is not a designated occupational disease, take the SARS as an example, that would not be an obstacle to an employee getting compensation. Commissioner, now, when we receive an application, if all the documents are complete, our target is to give out the compensation within ten weeks. In twenty nineteen, on average, now, if all the documents were ready, in a case within eight weeks, a compensation could be given. I think we were even, of course, we would like to be faster than our target. Now, if documents from the employee or from the insolvent company compete, then we can disperse the claims much faster. Now, on the question of expanding the scope because of a balance in the fund. Now, when we deal with compensation related to insolvency, we have offsetting arrangements. If in a few years' time, the offsetting arrangement is abolished, then the protection of wages on insolvency fund will have to take on the portion currently covered by the offsetting arrangement in MPF funds. Now, the economy is now going down, and we expect to have many more applications in the future. So we have to be very cautious before we decide whether we have the ability to expand the scope and to raise the amount of compensation.
Mr. Shi Kha Fai, the secretary talked about the very painful experience in relation to the four thousand dollars. And at this special F C meeting, we also have this painful experience. Yesterday, we announced the second phase of the anti-epidemic fund, and many measures are related to employees. And people ask what will happen to the self-employed, those aged sixty-five or above. Your reply all the time is that next week we will submit a document, and it's difficult to discuss the issues without a document. Now, you make the announcement yesterday, and naturally, we will follow up with questions on your proposals. And you are not giving good enough answers. So I think we have an embarrassing experience here, if not a painful one. I don't know how the timetable has worked in this way. Now, let me ask my question. I would like to follow up on L W B zero six zero. It's about ethnic minorities. In twenty seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, there are one oh six three, one oh seven one, and one two three one E M people who have registered to seek unemployment at the L D. And then only ninety-four, sixty, one, one, six, and one, three, two cases respectively have been successful. So it's the success rate is only nine percent, nine point eight percent, and ten point seven percent respectively. In twenty seventeen and eighteen, the L D has respectively referred interpretation services for two eight four four, three oh one four, and two five six five ethnic groups, minorities. And the success rate is only twenty, twenty-one, and ten respectively. And the success rate is less than one percent, a very low successful rate. So the interpretation service provided by the L D is complicated and it's very unuser-friendly. And that's why so few people use that service. So I'm not raising this for the first time here. So I would like to ask how the administration will improve on this. And this, we have a low job matching rate, low utilization rate of interpretation service. What does it represent? It means that you have not been doing enough for the E Ms? Or is it that you are out of your wits in helping them? So how come that the performance is so bad over the three years? And then zero seven five is about outsourced contractors breaching employment ordinance and O S H C ordinance. And the prosecution figures. If outsourced contractors cannot provide enough P P E for employees, so what will happen to them? At yesterday's F C, now, a cleansing worker will be given only four facial masks per week. And for the drivers of cleansing vehicles and the cleansing foreman, they don't have any surgical masks. If outsourced contractors do not give surgical masks to their frontline workers, can they be prosecuted? Or will the administration consider not give, awarding the tender to such contractors next time? So let me first answer the question on the E M, ethnic minorities. I hope that members can really look carefully at the figures and the meaning of those figures. Well, we can, we could not just do simple calculations out of these figures. In sixty A, while we talk about registering to seek application, and B is being hired after referral. We have not referred one oh three six, one one seven three, or one two three one. Now, most of them actually got a job through the information provided by the L D. So you cannot really divide A by B to come up with a success rate. Similarly, in C, we're talking about the referral of the interpretation service and what services can actually be arranged. We do not have the figures, the specific figures. You cannot divide two, two, two four, or two eight four four five twenty. Now, as for the outsourced contractors for high-risk jobs, theoretically, Uh, theoretically, uh, five surgical masks should be given out per week. Second, I defer to the commissioner. Let me talk about the, uh, ethnic minorities, interpretation services. As pointed out, but, or, um, as pointed out by the secretary, our present practice is that if Yance approached our job centers and asked for service. We will, um, in the first instance, introduce them to our interpretation service and ask them whether they need it. In twenty nineteen, we have referred two six five six E M job seekers. Uh, to such interpretation services. Close to eighty percent said that they don't need it because they can communicate with our colleagues in Chinese or English. And let's not forget that in every job center, we have a E M, uh, district ambassador. And then twenty percent say that the service ambassador can help them. And then for others, they may have a family and friends, uh, who can do the interpretation for them. So those who actually use our interpretation service are on the low side when it comes to this number. But in any case, we still have to maintain such such service, and if needed, we can provide it immediately. Now, as to the question of surgical masks. The, our colleagues have conducted inspections on our outsourced contractors. And if they find that not enough P P E is provided, then we will. Uh, possibly, uh, initiate prosecutions. Next one, Dr. Helena Wong. I've, I would like to first follow up on the, uh, home-based child carers that we talked about in the last session. The secretary, you talk about the, uh, payment, the incentive payment. The women's groups would like that, um, to be increased in amount. It's not, it should not be just twenty-five dollars per hour. The secretaries just said that if it is, uh, too high of, uh, a fee. Then the grassroots will not be able to afford it. And I would like to ask the administration, should the administration consider, uh, uh, providing more childcare services? But then your childcare service places are insufficient and utilization rate is high. But in your tables, it seems that it has not been used up. But then if you separate the subsidized and non-subsidized places, you will see that all the, um, subsidized places have been taken up. So. I suggest to the government, consider increasing the payment, uh, the incentive payment to beyond twenty-five dollars per hour. Can you also adopt a co-payment approach? That is, users should play part of it, and that the government can also co-pay part of the sum. And with the government subsidy, then. The child, home-based child carers will be more incentivized to do the work. And you can actually draw in more people to help out. For some home-based child carers, they may think that they are happy with what they do and they don't, that they don't ask for, um, a lot of money. But then some of this think that the incentive payment is too, uh, little, and they are not willing to take up the work. If we really want to, uh, attract more people to come into the profession, then the government should consider doing something more. There is indeed a need for that service. This is my suggestion. And then I have another question on L W B. L one oh one, and I am asking about the retraining board. I, Employment's Retraining Board, I noticed that there are a lot of females, um, enrolling in such courses. And you refer to the Love Upgrading Special Scheme. And you said that for, uh, participants of such courses. Everyone will be provided with a subsidy of five thousand eight hundred dollars per month. You said that you will extend the program. So would you extending it, um, from October twenty nineteen? And for how long? And during. Does it mean that whoever enrolls in the program will, can apply for the subsidy? I would like you to be more specific on the extension of the program. Because the course lasts for three, two to three months, right? Does it mean that the program will last for a longer period or what? And then L W B zero seven two, and that is raised by Mr. Andrew Wan. And that is about work injuries. In your appendix. Uh, you didn't mention about anything about the epidemic or COVID, uh, nineteen. And if, uh, employee contracts COVID nineteen during the course of work. Can he can claim, um, work injury compensation and holidays? So, secretary, would you like to repeat the answer you gave in the earlier session? I've heard members view, so we can go back and consider further. Now, as for the Love Upgrading Special Scheme, can I ask Mr. Feng to talk about it? On work injury, I think I've given an earlier answer. Under the present, uh, ordinance, so long as you can prove that it is, uh, the injury is incurred. In the course of the work or at the workplace, uh, that is covered under the present ordinance. So I have also quoted the example of two oh three SARS, although it was not an occupational disease. Uh, ninety percent of the claim compensation, uh, were approved. So if you know about this epidemic, there has been a lot of contact tracing going on. And if you, um, can prove that, that the, the disease is contracted in the workplace. And then that should suffice to prove that this is a work injury. And that actually the Center for Health Reduction is doing a lot of contact tracing. So that shouldn't be any problem. Now, as for extension of the Love Upgrading Special Scheme, Mr. Feng, P A S please. For the Love Upgrading Special Scheme that was launched in October last year, the original arrangement was that. Uh, you could, uh, roll in courses until the end of June this year. Now, on December, we announced an extension, so, uh, there will be, uh, another six months to be covered. So an additional ten thousand places will be available to, for participation by affected employees. So, um, they can, uh, people can start enrolling in July. And then in addition, ten thousand places will be made available. Mr. Vincent Zhang, thank you.
My question is zero eight six is again about the Love Upgrading Special Scheme. And I talked with this, uh, with the, um, secretary in the last session. I think it's a lifeline for employees. And you, uh, propose increasing the subsidy from four thousand to five thousand eight hundred dollars. We support it. But then, for this, uh, scheme, there are several problems identified. First, in the reply, the secretary said that in the past few months, um. Um, six point four nine billion dollars were spent, um, benefiting nine thousand one hundred and twenty-eight people. So, uh, six hundred dollars per person. So that might be many reasons, maybe classes have been suspended and so on. I've phoned up the training bodies myself. They said that the classes have been suspended. But then it's very difficult to get the four thousand dollars. You have to, um, sit in classes for a long time. And it's also very difficult to get the full five thousand and eight, eight hundred, um, dollars amount. And that also includes the traveling expenses, um, from the, uh, paid by the employees themselves. So I query the effectiveness of the five thousand eight hundred dollars subsidies. So what is your assessment? If, well, say if, uh, online courses can be offered. Can you conduct an assessment of how many people will get the full five thousand eight hundred dollars amount?
Well, the member was right in pointing out that if you look at the part one of the question. You can look at the, the figures on the number of trainees enrolled. And. Part three is called, uh, is about this amount of special allowance given out. But then a lot of people have not really completed the courses. And you could just, you can't just divide the total amounts by the number of people because a lot of people have yet to finish the courses. Now, uh, it is different from the general retraining courses. Well, even part-time courses are covered. So, um, people may just, uh, be underemployed instead of being out of jobs, so they can take on such courses. There, another special feature of this scheme is that there is no requirement on the qualifications. Now, under the U R P, um, the requirement is a sub-degree level or below. But for this, uh, Love Upgrading Scheme, there is no requirement on the academic qualification. So that's the beauty of this scheme.
All right, secretary. Now, among the nine thousand, uh, trainees, about, uh, seven thousand of them, uh, were unemployed. So, uh, most of them were unemployed. They really, uh, joined the programs because of the four thousand dollar allowance. Now, you told us that come next Tuesday, uh, all the courses will be resumed. Does that mean that everyone can join the online lessons? Can you review after two months to see how many people can really, uh, get five thousand, um, eight hundred dollars? And I know you said no to that already, but can you pay out the allowance first and take the courses later so that they can get the line flying first? That was really asked recently. Yes, and this, um, boils down to the principle of retraining. We make use of our system to help those who are unemployed or underemployed. But we should also, uh, look at the policy as well. Uh, the intention of, uh, Y A B to, uh, offer the allowances. Is to, um, to, to subsidize a training. Where they said because of the epidemic, some of the courses were, uh, have been, uh, disrupted. So next week, we cannot resume all courses. Because, um, for some, uh, programs, uh, there has to be very close contact between the trainers and trainees. Now, for courses that, uh, do not require face-to-face, uh, training. Then, um. Online courses can be done, but, uh, there will be risks if there is too much, uh, um, contact between the trainer and trainee. What possible will resume the courses? And if you look at the second, uh, part of my reply, yes, uh, for those unemployed, they take the, uh, courses. Full time, if they can complete, uh, the, uh, program in, uh, within six months. And they will be able to get the allowance. Yes, please, uh, uh, adopt an open mind and review. Uh, take a review after two months and see whether everyone can get five thousand eight hundred dollars. Because the government, government money is not easy to get. Thank you. Second round. All right, Mr. Lok Chong Hong, five minutes. Thank you, Chairman. Given, uh, the, uh, serious epidemic, epidemic outbreak. We cannot overlook the, um, interests of employers, employees. Now, uh, reply oh four one, employees' rights. My, uh, question, uh, was, uh, the fines imposed for, uh. Every case of industrial fatalities in the past three years, we are saddened to, uh, see such cases. Because human lives cannot be measured with money. But the fines are, were too low, and you could not really, uh, seek redress for the victims. And their families. Of course, in last year's policy address, the government proposed to amend the relevant legislation. I remember a related discussion in the manpower panel. I'd like to ask the secretary, what is the progress? I'm worried that employers will, uh, say, uh, use, uh, the current economic difficulty. As an excuse to, um. To, uh, block your legislative amendment exercise. I understand that, uh, the, uh, exercise would certainly only start in the next legislative term. But can you guarantee that you are going to press ahead with the legislative amendment regardless? Thank you. Dr. Law.
Yes, the Chief Executive promised that in her policy address. And, uh, this government, uh, takes this matter very seriously. And the Labor Department has spent a lot of time and energy on the legislative amendment exercise already. We've heard the views of the sector as well as the labor sector. We've almost completed compiling the views, and we're now preparing the, um, drafting work. In twenty twenty twenty-one, our target is to submit the, uh, bill within this year. Understand that, um, many, um, officers in the Bureau of, uh, Minnesota Condit. To deal with poverty alleviation, will that affect the progress of the legislative amendment exercise? Do you need more manpower? No, our progress of work will not be affected. We understand that the Labor Department will have to deal with complaints. And also, uh, uh, wages in arrears because of insolvency. But the legislative exercise, uh, will, um, proceed as planned, will be able to cope.
Mr. Ho Kai Ming. I had ninety related to the Labor Department. Because of the epidemic, I understand that some departments have stopped their frontline services. But the Labor Department is so important, given the poor economic situation, there are bound to be more labor disputes. In twenty. Uh, in twenty, uh, ten, in twenty nineteen, uh, the, um, um. The, uh, consultative, uh, interview would, uh, be about thirty-minute per session. I'd like to know, um, for, for twenty twenty, what is the expected, uh, time? What is the, um, uh, planned duration of face-to-face advisory service to our employees? Commissioner, because of the epidemic, the Labor Department has to, um, uh, reduce the need. For, uh, contact between our offices and members of the public. In the past month, uh, service centers of the Labor Department to deal with later disputes. Has stopped or suspended, uh, face-to-face, um, contact. But that doesn't mean that we are doing nothing. When it comes to labor disputes, we now mainly provide online service. And, uh, we also, um, take calls, and when they are really, uh, urgent cases. We will coordinate, uh, between employers and employees. All right, you cannot provide to face-to-face service. What about, uh, phone calls? Can you, uh, give me some statistics? Uh, how long will, uh, it take for you to, uh, reply to a call or to an email?
Uh, I don't have, uh, such figures with me. I can, uh, supplement later. Well, uh, I, I do have it. Uh, they just couldn't get through for one eight. Now, I was told by my colleagues that if you call the Labor Department hotline. Then, uh, the line is forwarded to one eight two three. And then one eight two three, uh, will tell you that will focus on, uh, labor-related issues. And then, uh, after a while, uh, the line will, uh, be busy and then it'll be cut. So you can't even leave your name. How can your call be returned? I don't know how, uh, can you achieve, uh, this pledge of returning a call within thirty minutes? I know that because of the epidemic, you can't have face-to-face consultation, but why can't? You will reply a phone call. At least you should provide a mobile phone for your colleagues, uh, to answer calls. Now, for the eighty billion dollars, people are asking, uh, now if, uh, employees cannot receive, uh, that nine thousand dollars. Then they have to report to the Labor Department, but then on the hotline is always busy and a phone will never be returned. As far as I understand, this is not the way it works. One eight two three will also deal with labor issues. Now, you just give me the figures, give me some figures. This is a case referred to me by my colleague. Miss Lee, Assistant Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner. Uh Mister Ho referred to labour disputes and uh employers and how employers or employees uh can um contact uh staff of the Labour Relations Division by phone or by email. Now, because of the epidemic, the government has special um arrangements. So we may not be able to provide face-to-face counter-service as a result. But because of the current situation, in ten um district offices of our Labour Relations Division, we have a temporary hotline so that members of the public can contact our um division. Now, we are vetting the estimates, so we should be looking at the figures. How long will it take for a call to be returned? Please let me finish first. Now, in the first quarter of this year, the Labour Relations Division has got ten district offices. In total, it has handled fifteen thousand one hundred and sixty-three telephone inquiries and also other uh inquiries and writing, including uh email inquiries. Four thousand and seventy-eight in total. We do at most to handle these inquiries by phone or by uh email to assist employers and employees to um uh deal with inquiries related to the employment ordinance.
Doctor Fernando Zhang. Though the Secretary in answering a question on whether COVID nineteen can be listed as an occupational disease. Now, the Secretary said that it's not that there is no safeguard at all if it can be proved that an employee uh was injured in the course of duty accidentally, there can be compensation. The problem is how can you prove that uh the um the employee contracted the disease in an accident? You, very often you can't really uh pinpoint the time and the incident or occasion when the employee contracted the disease. It's difficult to prove to the court that it was an accident. It's not my view, but legal advice.
According to Secretary, in twenty oh three, SARS outbreak, it was until twenty oh five when the law took effect to include SARS uh into uh the list of occupational disease in a cap two eighty, Employees Compensation Ordinance. Back then, most cases were related to the hospital authority because we're talking about healthcare personnel. And back then, H A gave them compensation regardless. Although the disease was not yet listed as an occupational disease, H A as the employer compensated employees who passed away or who were sick during the SARS outbreak. Now, for this pneumonia, would it only just affect staff of the H A? Of course, I don't want a single one of them to be affected. But there are many high-risk occupations such as flight attendants, uh people working in the transport trade and also uh staff working in residential care homes. There is a pressing need for this disease to be included as an occupational disease. I don't want the Secretary to dodge our question, claiming that he will continue to consider this issue. Even in late January, I already asked the Secretary to consider this. Subsequently, many um members of the healthcare and labour sector asked the same of the Secretary. It's been two months. In twenty oh three, uh the matter was um addressed somehow. And now, this disease affects so many people globally. Please give some basic protection uh for workers in Hong Kong.
Doctor Law, basic protection is there. In twenty oh three, the experience back then, back then tells us that when the Centre for Health Protection can really uh trace the transmission of the disease, and I believe it uh would generally help uh prove whether the disease is contracted in the course of work. If the C H P cannot ascertain the transmission route, say for example, some healthcare staff um have been infected in other circumstances, then there is, then this is another scenario. Members are very concerned about this, I know. And uh is there sufficient protection under the present ordinance? Uh going by experience, going by the evidence to be collected, um that can be done. You, you may appreciate that um there are certain complexities to infectious diseases. And uh why don't, didn't we include H N H one seven and one as an occupational disease? There are certain reasons behind. In particular, when uh we are talking about a virus and not a bacteria. Now, tuberculosis is contracted by a um a bacteria instead of a virus. So there are really different medical backgrounds to a certain disease and that will um affect whether a certain disease will be listed as in occupational diseases. Uh Secretary, do you have a stance now? Cite SARS um as an example, it is now an occupational disease. Um the world around, only Singapore and Hong Kong listed as an occupational disease. Later, the Singapore, Singapore has um taken out the disease from the occupational disease list. And the world around, only Hong Kong listed as an occupational disease. And that is different from the definition of the I L O as to what an occupational disease is. And today, we can't really um draw a conclusion as to whether COVID nineteen should be designated an occupational disease. Mister Ho Kai Ming, I would like to follow up on the communication with um um Miss Lee. Uh the figure is fifteen thousand plus four thousand, so nineteen thousand altogether. And that includes uh face-to-face interviews in handling labour dispute. So the total number is seventy eight thousand. And she's referring to the number of a quarter, so divided by four, then it's only nineteen thousand. So, so the numbers are the same as that of last year. I wonder whether they make up the figures or what? I can't be sure. And if we look at zero, zero eight, the last time we suffered from a financial crisis, there were some eighteen three, eighty-three thousand inquiries. How come that, given the very bad economic situation now, the public's encouraged numbers was just the same as last year and the year before last and the year before that as well? And that, it was a far cry from the numbers when we experienced a difficult economic um crisis. So can the Commissioner uh explain how or why the figures are like that? But then we, we can't get the line through, but then you still have so many cases still. Miss Lee, please. I provided the data for Q one of this year and we are to compare this together with the um, the entire year's figures, and that's a difference. So seventy eight thousand uh divided by four is nineteen thousand only. Okay, let me supplement. During the epidemic, the government has implemented these special working hours. The Labour Relations Division cannot provide a face-to-face service through counters, but we do uh provide telephone advisory services. We address um written inquiries. And if the um labour disputes are emerg, urgent, then we will also handle those. In Q one this year, the number of labour disputes handled is twenty-eight cases compared to the same period last year, up seventy-five percent already. And so you can't say that the figure is the same as last year's. Labour dispute cases alone, we have handled twenty-eight cases in Q one, a substantial increase from that, uh from the corresponding period last year. So these are real figures. Corresponding period last year, well, ju- January last year, the economic was, the economy is very good. So that's why the labour disputes uh are worth your number. But now, you are just talking about twenty-odd cases. So that is quite different from what we are seeing in reality. So does the Labour Department have a uh central hotline? Just give us um the hotline number. You said that there are ten hotlines. Can you give us um a specific hotline number um to which people can really call through and they can get their questions answered? So from nine to five, maybe, I'm not asking for a twenty-four-hour service. Give us the number so that people will not have their line transferred to one eight two three and get the, a person to answer their questions. So is it the Commissioner or Assistant Commissioner who will address the question? Let me supplement. Uh just now, I mentioned, we have ten district offices in labour relations. Uh we have set up a temporary hotline. There are ten hotline numbers which have been widely publicized on, say, the Labour Department's website. So these numbers are displayed. So it's the employer or the employee side can actually call with these uh ten numbers. So maybe you can read one or two to Mister Ho. Or is it the case that all of them will be transferred to one eight two three? Miss Lee, can you um give a couple of telephone numbers uh here? For example, Hong Kong, East Island, the um Labour Relations Division. Three, it's three five eight six two three eight five O, West uh Hong Kong Island, two nine two two, six one one three. And for Quintong and Kalanese, well, you can check those um on the website. The Assistant Commissioner has given you some numbers. Maybe you can ask the workers who are involved in labour disputes uh to call that, those numbers. I think this session, um, that's it for this session. Uh to scrutinize the twenty twenty, uh twenty eleven budget, we have uh held twenty-one sessions of our special F C S. I would like to thank the participation of all um government departments. I would like to remind members that the Appropriation Bill twenty twenty will be um uh discussed or introduced on the twenty-second of fourth in the council and the second reading uh debate will resume then. Thank you very much.